Months off. We have a fairly busy schedule, so we'll get to it. The Richmond Board of Education acknowledged and thanks the first people of the Hunkamian Language Group on whose traditional and unceded territories we teach, learn, and live. Okay, I believe we have some announcements to start off with. Who has the announcement? Trustee Wong.
Thank you, Chairman. September is Literacy Month in British Columbia. Literacy Month celebrates each year in September in B.C., increases awareness of the importance of literacy, and raises funds to support community-based literacy programs and initiatives across British Columbia. Literacy provides opportunities for all of us to make a substantial contribution to the education, growth, and prosperity of Canada beyond reading and writing. Literacy allows us to understand physicalities and analysis and create a variety of forms of communication as a foundation of our society. It is crucial to thriving as individuals and communities. The 2025 theme for Literacy Month is "Literacy: The Ripple Effect," which highlights that improved literacy skills have a ripple effect, helping to improve qualities of life at home, at work, and in the community. We encourage everyone to connect and celebrate literacy each and every day in their school, home, and community. Thank you.
Trustee Blotney, you have a message?
Yes, I do. This is a good one. World Teachers' Day 2025. So, World Teachers' Day is held annually on October 5th to celebrate and honor the incredible contributions of our teachers who are tirelessly working to shape the minds and futures of our students. Their dedication, passion, and commitment to education are the cornerstones of our district's success. This year, the theme for World Teachers' Day is "Empowering Educators for a Sustainable Future." We recognize that teachers play a pivotal role in fostering a sustainable and inclusive world. Through innovative teaching methods, they inspire students to think critically, act responsibly, and continue or contribute positively to society. Our teachers foster a positive and inclusive environment where every student can thrive, and their impact extends far beyond the classroom. We invite all members of the community to join us in celebrating this important day. The Richmond Board of Education would like to express their gratitude to all teachers who contribute to making the school district the best place to learn and to lead. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Larson.
Thank you. National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, September 30th, often referred to as Orange Shirt Day. September 30th is the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. This statutory holiday allows us the opportunity to reflect on the Truth and Reconciliation Commission's findings and resulting calls to action. We encourage all in our community to reflect on the findings of the Commission and to read the 90 far calls to action. Orange Shirt Day began in Williams Lake in 2013, honoring the Indigenous children who were sent away to residential schools in Canada. It has become a national movement to recognize the survivors of residential schools, honor them, and show a collective commitment to ensure that every child matters. Acknowledged every year at the end of September, Orange Shirt Day opens the door to conversations on all aspects of residential schools and is an opportunity to create meaningful discussion about the effects of residential schools and the legacy they have left behind. The Richmond Board of Education is committed to reconciliation and invites all members of our school communities to participate in Orange Shirt Day and take time to reflect on the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation on September 13th. Thank you.
Anna Lee, trustee Lisa, you have a announcement?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. October is Foster Family Month in B.C., which marks the 35th year of celebrating the individuals and families who opened their homes to children and youth in care in B.C. The province first proclaimed this month in 1990, creating an annual opportunity to recognize foster families for their commitment and the positive impact they have on the lives of children and their families. These caregivers were required to ensure that the young people in their care are provided with a safe and healthy home and are cared for and nurtured through some of the most difficult and formative years of their lives. There is an urgent need for foster caregivers for children and youth through B.C., and anyone who is interested in becoming a foster parent is encouraged to visit bcfosterparents.ca for more information. A big thank you for all Richmond foster families. Okay, thank you. Good night.
Thank you, trustee Lisa. Secretary of Treasury Wang, is there any materials not included in the package available to the public?
Yeah, thank you, Chairperson. All information are published on the district website.
Thank you. Trustees, you have the agenda. Unless there's any additions, can I get a mover in a second or two to the agenda? Trustee Yang, follow and seconded by trustee Sargent, thank you. All in favor? Wonderful. Hey, we have no presentations free for special recognitions tonight. Hopefully, we'll have some the next meeting. Our first question, period, questions from the public. Anyone from public that has a point? Come on up. Let's get the air rolling.
Thank you. And, you know, we're off to a new school year. We always consider really this is the new year, 2025, 2026. Thank you, trustees and district staff. Liz Baberstock, President, Richmond Teachers Association. I've got two questions. I'll actually do one now, and then I'll save one until later just because I'm looking at how the agenda fits together. And so my first question actually is in relationship, I would say, both to the Strategic Plan Report, but also the Enhanced Student Learning Report. And it is, the first thing I do is acknowledge, and of course, it's World Teachers' Day next month, but just acknowledge the work of teachers every day for what you see in here, right? Like, you know, the things in the strategic priorities that you're, that are in the reports and the student learning report, you know, that is the work of teachers every day, which I've heard you recognize, and I do appreciate that, and I know teachers do appreciate that recognition. So my question really, though, is in regards to the Enhanced Student Learning Report for the board, and it is, as we start a new school year, and you know that ministry continues to have additional asks for teachers. We know that the ministry is committed to the provincial literacy assessment. Unfortunately, that's not going to come with the necessary support. So as trustees, I know this is advocacy you're going to continue to do, both in terms of funding, in terms of training. But the other thing is about workload, because when the ministry decides to add additional things, they never actually look at, well, is there an assessment that we actually could be phasing out because we are replacing it with something new? And so, and also thinking about timing. So at this time of the year, October 1st, Foundation Skills Assessment will start. And what I appreciate about this report is actually does talk about the timing of that report and it being so early in the school year. So that is something that I really do ask trustees to take forward. The timing of the FSA, how the data is actually used, the length of the FSA. What teachers are doing in September is they are getting to know their students, and they do that through a variety of assessments that they do themselves. And I think this report does a good job of talking about the assessments that teachers do individually with students. And September is actually full of them, where they're doing their own assessments on reading, numeracy, getting to know students so that they can have those important conversations with parents. And then we get the FSA. It's another thing. The FSA then is actually very long, and it takes away from now October, which is really the time where we start to say, all that information we've gathered in September, we're actually going to use to make our planning and learning journey that we want to embark upon. So with the ministry having this initiative, and there may be a provincial tool next year, I think it's time for them to think about, do we need to add another tool? Is there something that we could take away? Because we want to make sure that, you know, we have time for the learning part, the most important part of this journey. So that is my request of trustees. That's my question, and I really do appreciate the reports. Thank you.
Number five, active report.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. Just in the spirits of appreciation, just to follow up on Ms. Baberstock's acknowledgement of the good work that our teachers do, our support staff, folks who work in our schools, in our central offices, and throughout the district. And the reports that were, was referenced, that were, the two reports reference, the Enhanced Student Report and certainly the STRAT Plan, that reflects the work of every single member in our, of this district, and everyone contributes to student success. And of course, it goes without saying that the reason why this district continues to be a high-performing district, and we continue to experience positive results, is because we have committed dedicated staff in our organization, and that's, and we must celebrate that daily, and it's something that, that we should all take pride. But of course, we also, I'd be remiss if I did not acknowledge our students and certainly families. With the start of a school year, it takes time for families to get back into a new routine, and one of the things I very much enjoy is visiting schools. The first day of school, I was fortunate to be at a school and actually had a chance to engage with not only staff and students, but also families, parents who are dropping off their kids on the first day of school. So that is, that is always wonderful. And here we are, almost at the end of the first month of school. So right, just a real appreciation and gratitude for the work that is happening in our district, and I look very much forward to another exciting year. It's always learning happens daily, and I often say, what happens in our schools and in our district is more than just students learning how to read and write, that the work we do each day is really creating better futures for our young people and families. And for that, I'm most grateful. And of course, today, and trustee Larson started in our announcement in terms of the reason why we are wearing orange shirts today, and I know that in our school communities in the next couple of days, and certainly on the 30th throughout the city, I know that folks will be wearing Orange Shirt Day, and it's more than just a symbolic gesture, it's a commitment that we have in our district and the work that we do to support truth and reconciliation and to be in good relations, as we're often reminded, good relations with Indigenous peoples, and also certainly in true, not only our acknowledgements of the land, but also a recognition that we are in concert in support of the good work that is happening and everyone working in unison to make sure that this district continues to thrive and our students continue to experience success. So that's my report. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item six, approval minutes of prior meetings. Few here, so please bear with me. We have the record of an in-camera meeting held, of the board held Wednesday, June 18th, 2025. We had a regular meeting of the board held Wednesday. I don't go back again. A record of an in-camera meeting of the board held Wednesday, June 18th, 2025. Regular meeting of the board held Wednesday, June 18th for approval. Trustees, if you have the notes or the minutes in your package, can I get a mover in a second? Can I, all in favor? Close. We have a record of a spec- We have a special meeting of the board held Tuesday, June 24th, 2025 for approval. Minutes are included in your package, got to get a mover in a second or. Trustee Wong, full, thank you, and seconded by trustee de Blotney. All in favor? Thank you. We have a record of a special in-camera meeting of the board held Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, and we have a special meeting of the board held Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025 for approval. So I'm looking for a mover in our secondary. Trustee Wong, trustee Yang, thank you. All in favor? Very. All right. Moving on, business arising from prior minutes. We have a annual report to the board regarding the Strategic Plan 2025, your report from the superintendent, and report is attached. Anything you'd like to add to that?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. The, each year, there's a report as provided to trustees and certainly on the progress made towards the Strategic Plan, and in this case, during the 2024-25 school year, and also to outline the areas of the focus for the upcoming 2026-2030 Strategic Plan. I'm quite, I'm pleased to report that the vast majority of actions scheduled for completion during the 2020-25 Strategic Plan were achieved, and the district, through the work of every member of the district, we've made, we've made some excellent progress. I will highlight just a few accomplishments, because I think it's worthwhile to note the accomplishments that have taken place, recognizing that the current STRAT Plan, this is the last time we're reporting on that Strategic Plan as we transition next year, based on the board's approval of a new Strategic Plan. So under Inspired Learners, I'm pleased to share that we supported over 110 inquiry grants in the 2024-25 school year. Eight of those grants were focused on outdoor learning, and 21 of those were EchoWise grants. Secondly, under that category, or that priority, I should say, we continue to collaborate with the City of Richmond and Vancouver Coastal Health through committee work, information sharing, and initiatives such as wellness strategy, community wellness tables, and healthy school partnerships. And that's a clear example of the work we do, certainly that the district supports around ensuring that we are connected to our communities and our partners. Another example I like to highlight, under Inspired Learners, we've continued to establish, you know, we've established and implemented Indigenous Focus Graduation Requirement for the 2023 Graduation Program. And last but not least, on that, under that category, again, the development and implementation of the pillars of literacy and numeracy, and creating resources to support teachers, and certainly which aids, and those resources aid in the alignment of proficiency indicators that we have as a district. The second priority, as the board is well aware, under equity and inclusion, again, I'd just like to highlight a couple of areas, points of celebration. The district continues to develop and expand and engage with student-focused groups to understand, to understand your sense of belonging and to get a feedback for district planning. I think we all agree that student voices is essential to the work that we do. Secondly, pleased to report that we've developed resources to support teachers in the areas of cultural diversity, celebrations, history, systemic discrimination, and marginalization. And thirdly, under equity and inclusion, the establishment of two more Indigenous gathering spaces for the duration of the plan, one at Boyd Secondary and the other one at Keita Elementary School. And congratulations to the board for recognizing the need for those gathering spaces and for the additional gathering spaces, as I've noted. Under the category of optimized facilities and technology, pleased to report that there has been an increase, we have increased access to technology hardware by implementing sustainable structures for schools and the district to acquire and allocate hardware. And secondly, we've implemented guidelines, curated resources, and support the integration of artificial intelligence into teaching, learning, and district operations. And of course, we are recognized the evolution of artificial intelligence, and you know, that, and that, the work that is happening, certainly promoting or creating opportunities for professional learning to expand that in our, in our district. Under progressive workplace, just again, I like a couple of examples, training and support for all administrators and managers to effectively support your staff in difficult situations related to equity, diversity, and inclusion in the workplace, and also offering workshops on anti-racism to staff. Just a couple more. And if the, as well, under the Connected Learning Community, we have, I like to highlight three examples, conducted annual audits of district and school communications to verify adherence and design and content standards, and also established and implemented an annual review process for public-facing content across district websites, and this work ensures that information remains current, accessible, and responsive to the needs of the community. And a point of, a point of celebration, last year in March, the district launched Richnet, which really is a reliable and accessible hub for internal communication. The platform, the platform has received more than 2.2 million visits. I just read that last night, and I was quite, quite impressed, to date, averaging over 11,000 visits per day, just imagine that, and has become the primary destination for staff seeking district updates and resources. I could go on, but the point here, trustees, and certainly those who are listening, behind all that, all the accomplishments, as I made reference in my opening remarks, are reflected in the commitment and the work of everyone in the organization, our school leaders, our system leaders, those teachers, support staff, central departments, everyone in this organization is reflected in the work and the accomplishments of the Strategic Plan, and I'm pleased to share that when you look at the reports, you will notice how the report is organized and how there is a particular reference to the areas, recommended areas of focus for 2026-2030. And, and the reason why that's important is because the work ahead, the next Strategic Plan that the board is engaged in, that work builds on the current work that is, that is happening in this organization. So these are, we ought to celebrate the good work that has happened in 2020-2025, but we also recognize, and the board has made it abundantly clear, that we should build on the success, and we've done so, and I'm proud to report that when you take the time to look at this report and the way it's outlined, I hope you will, you will see the connection to the areas of focus as we move forward to the next Strategic Plan. And I just want to commend the wonderful team that I work with daily, the senior team, and certainly all our leaders, because I know that this work is something that there's great pride, because we see our system and our district, and it reflects the care and the dedication and the commitment that folks bring to their work each and every day. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and that's the report.
Trustees, any questions regarding this report? Looking, oh, trustee Lisa, go ahead.
Just comment, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to take, have some praises to the district, because in terms of proficiency in literacy and numeracy, we are better than the provincial average. And I think, I don't know if perceived from the ministry, less or none at all, but in spite of that, we had been optimizing technology in our school district, and perhaps we can address better if we have the funding, the right, appropriate, and stable funding from the ministry.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, the report was excellent, but I really like what's added the recommended areas of focus for 2026 to 2030. You know, before we, we actually commit to our new STRAT Plan, this is, this is embedded in this report, which is actually really helpful to look at, and I wanted to point out the, the, increase the capacity of schools to implement inclusive and adaptive programming for physical health and career education, which I think is really important, and the increase the support capacity for the K-12 physical health and education curriculum. And I, you know, I foresee with some of the health and safety additions that the ministry has required and policy change, that there, you know, there's, there's possibility of, of expanding that mandate. So I think it's, it's really great. And also, you know, the grad coaches for Indigenous learners, I think that, that one is super important, and I'm sure we'll see the, the fruits of that labor soon, and also the increase on student voice and student focus groups. So I think we've done some excellent work and more to come. So thank you for the, for the report.
Thank you, trustee de Blotney. Okay, we're going to move on to item seven B. We have a recommendation regarding the 2026-27 capital plan, capital programs, and we have a report from our secretary, Secretary Wang. Is there anything you want to highlight from your report or add?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Chairperson. So the report is on page 47. The minor capital plan is due to the Ministry of Infrastructure by September 30th for the provincial capital funding consideration. And staff, we recommend that the board education approve the 26-27 minor capital plan. And of course, the purpose of these projects is to make sure we have well-maintained school facilities that meet the needs of our learning community. So that's my report.
Trustees, any questions for Secretary, Secretary Wang? Trustee Yang?
Thank you very much, Chairperson. Yeah, thanks for staff for this report, and certainly, these are, these upgrades that we're asking for are very much, much needed in our schools. Just a question around the playground program. So I note that we've listed a couple of schools, including Oddlin, and I was just wondering about the ranking of that, because currently at the new, at Oddlin, there is no playground, and so just wondering what the thought process. Uh, not for-
Both as number one, we would do it. But the reason we have Ferris listed as number one is because the playground there has reached its life, lifetime. So it's a lifetime issue, and we need to make sure this facility- One, and then in that we can receive two playground funding.
Keep your fingers crossed for that. Thank you very much.
David Blotney?
Yeah, I wanted to ask a question about the, I see we've got the bus replacement program under here, which is very, and I see that we're looking to get two buses replaced for electric buses. Those buses, are they as big as the one we took in the parade?
You know, thank you, trustee de Blotney, for the question. I don't have the answer top of my head, but, but I will get back to you. Potentially, they're the larger buses.
The larger buses, yeah, because, you know, in both parades, we were pretty proud- The larger buses, yeah, because you know, in both parades, we were pretty proud to, to display our electric buses and. Vancouver School Board was there and some of the other school boards at the pride parade and. I had kept pointing out that ours was electric, you know, so it was kind of fun. Anyway, those, those electric buses are, you know, really saving fuel and, and emissions and everything, so glad to have them. And they're not made by our, ran down across the border, is it Tesla? So anyway, and it's great to, great to see them that we're looking for more. So fingers crossed.
Trustee Sergeant?
I'll move recommendation.
Taken.
Okay, moves and seconded by trustee Beliza. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Post? Motion is carried, recommendation is carried. Okay. Now move on to another recommendation regarding our enhanced student learning report. A report from superintendent and assistant superintendent. Would you like to add to your report, some highlights?
Yes, thank you, Chairperson. Good evening. I'd like to speak a little bit and just give some highlights from the report tonight. Just to share that the enhancing student learning report is meant to fit with the district's continuous improvement cycle. And it's a touch point for districts to reflect and report on the progress that we are making towards our district strategic plan priorities. And to report to the Ministry of Education and childcare. It also gives us an opportunity to adjust our strategies and adapt for growth on an ongoing basis. And of course, to share progress with public. If you are an avid reader of the enhancing student learning reports, you will note that there has been a change to the format this year. So I thought I would just share that a little bit. So the part one of the report. Comes to us from the Ministry of Education with data that is pre populated, which is our provincial data from foundation skills assessments, graduation assessments, student, student learning surveys, et cetera. And then we add our district level data to that report. The part two is called an interim progress report and that is new this year from the Ministry of Education. This year, one third of districts in the province are providing a full enhancing student learning report. And two thirds are providing an interim progress report. And this year Richmond is assigned an interim progress report, so you might notice that that's the piece that looks a bit different from previous years. And when we look at all of the data, we are asked to analyze and interpret the data. So we look at the context within which that data is gathered, the trends that we are noticing. And comparisons between local and provincial data. And then to interpret that data in terms of new information that emerges, the strength in areas for growth, growth. And, and how we are doing in terms of supporting our priority populations. So you'll notice that flow through the report. And then in part two, that is where we reflect and make adjustments to our strategies in the areas of intellectual development. Human and social development and career development, the three areas that the Ministry of Education and childcare asks us to report on. So we talk about the actions that we are taking, many of those relate directly to our strategic plan. What we are trying to address with those actions or strategies, how that is going and if we are going to be continuing those strategies or adapting those strategies. So that's what you'll see in part two. So overall, it's a big report as you, as you've noticed, so I'll just give some highlights of part one and two combined. Overall, the big ideas are Richmond is a high performing district. Our learners perform above the provincial average in almost all of, all of the areas of the report and we have high graduation rates. There is a need for us, however, to focus on achievement gaps for our priority populations. Priority populations being students with designations, disabilities and diverse abilities, children and youth in care and indigenous students. Also, we, because we have high ELL population in this district, we also look at our ELL results as well. There's a need for us to employ some targeted strategies to ensure that the results are trending upwards. And we are already seeing some areas that are improving in the report. So the first area is intellectual development, literacy and numeracy, so as noted, we do perform above the provincial average. We have most of our students in kindergarten progressing quite significantly in their phonemic awareness and their proficient, reading proficiency. Over the kindergarten year and we're also seeing that. Through the spring reading snapshot that students are improving in their reading and literacy skills. From when they're assessed through the FSA in October to the end of their school year, we're seeing improvement. We are noticing, however, there has been a decrease in FSA literacy scores. And that could be due to a number of reasons. One could be some hangover from the COVID pandemic. The fact that the FSA is written at the beginning of the school year as President of the RTA noted earlier. And then ensuring that there's alignment between what is assessed in the FSA and what is being taught in the classroom. We do have some persistent gaps for our priority populations that we want to attend to. We are looking at expanding the screeners for our two grade one this year. Assessing on proficiency rubrics that are common from K to nine. Ensuring that literacy instruction is being intended to daily in, in elementary school classrooms. The school learning stories are focused on literacy and numeracy. And that we're aligning our human and financial resources to focus on supporting literacy with our literacy leads in secondary schools. Consultants in our elementary schools and that development of that aligned rubric for assessment. In human and social development, we look at how students feel welcome, safe and connected. That's assessed through the student learning surveys, middle years and early years development indexes. That are conducted by the Health Institute and this year we developed our own district belonging survey. To get data from more grades, not just the students who write the student learning survey. And to ask questions in a focused manner because we know that the student learning survey is quite lengthy. So having a shorter survey helps us ask the questions that we want to get the answers to. And we did find that students say they feel very safe and connected in their classroom environments. And that the student voice initiatives help to promote inclusivity and belonging. And we want to continue to look at where students are, where that's scoring lower and look at strategies to improve those feelings of feeling welcome, safe and connected across our district. And finally, the final area is career development, graduation, life and core comp, career and core competencies. So as noted, our graduation rates are consistently high in Richmond. Our students with diverse abilities and disabilities do perform above the provincial average. And we are seeing upward trend in graduation rates for priority populations. Also, our students do transition at a higher rate to post secondary above the provincial average. And we've been working to expand our dual credit career programs. And there's a strong interest from students in those dual, dual credit opportunities. We want to focus on our priority population and increase, increase graduation rates for indigenous students and children and youth in care. And there is a bit of a data limitation in that the transition to post secondary institutions is tracked only for B C post secondary institutions. And we know that many of our students seek post secondary opportunities elsewhere in the country and around the world as well. So as was already previously mentioned this evening, we are expanding our indigenous, indigenous graduation coach program to all of our secondary schools. And really looking at how we can expand those partnerships and program offerings for dual credit. That brings me to the end of my report and I'm happy to take any questions.
Trustees.
Yeah, um, yeah, it was a really interesting report and we also had a presentation on it as well. As trustees, so it's, it's been super interesting. You know, since this framework was introduced a few years ago, come a long way now that we're doing our reporting. Just was curious about the spark screener. That you added to grade one, I, I just wondered why you added that to grade one. On top of, you know, the screener in kindergarten.
Yeah, so the phonemic assessment is being expanded by the province. To eventually to all of primary K to three. And this year we're expanding that one grade more to grade one, so the phonemic awareness screener will be implemented in kindergarten and grade one this year.
Okay, and then will it continue to expand?
As per the ministry's directive, yes.
The spark, okay, and then also the children and youth in care. I mean, that, you know, initiative is moving on. I remember when that was introduced and, you know, to me it was a godsend and it should still be. But we did have trouble filling positions, so is that still the case or are we able to fully staff? Some of those positions?
I may defer to the executive director of HR for that question.
So, you know, perhaps maybe you could send me the, I'm just curious, it's a curious question, so. Because I know that, you know, when it started, we're. We were scrambling for people and, and if you want the program to work, I mean, we need it at full capacity, which. I'd be happy to hear that it was, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a few questions so that I understand because there's just, there's just so much information. When they, when, when it's mentioned about targeted strategies. Do those start targeted strategies come from the ministry or?
Are you talking about like, for example, for our indigenous students and children, you think here?
Yes.
Yeah, so what we are focusing on in terms of supporting those particular priority populations is what we call wraparound support. So we make sure that for those students, that everyone who's working with those students is fully apprised. Of what their learning needs are, what their social emotional learning needs are, we work with the families that are supporting those students. And their, their counselors and other support workers that are perhaps in the community as well as our employees to really make sure that we're. Looking at all the things that will support that learner's path to graduation.
Okay, and, and then just one more, I'm thinking because of being an education assistant for thirteen years. To, to read this is, is it, it makes me realize just how important the teamwork between. The classroom teacher, the, the EA, the resource teacher, the counselor, the, all of that support, so. This, I, I know we talk a lot about our priority population. But the other kids, those are identified kids, correct? So, so the other children that are in the classroom that aren't necessarily identified but require that added. Arms around kind of work together. That, that isn't shown as a separate area, is it, is it?
Yeah, great question. Thank you for the question. So in terms of the, the report that the ministry asks us to provide, so they are focused particularly on those identified populations as you. Have noted, because we, there's data that's collected for those specific priority populations based on their designations. However, we, classroom teachers, EAs, principals, vice principals are supporting all students regardless of. Whether they have a designation or not, because teachers work really hard to make sure that they're meeting their learners where they're at. And helping support them through, through the, through the educational goals of the course or the year if they're in elementary.
Okay, just a final comment, we've got our work cut out for advocacy for sure. To get, to make sure we get more funding for all of those kids that need it and don't have it right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Trustee Yang, followed by trustee sergeant and trustee Beliza.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. I don't have any questions, but I, I do want to thank staff for putting together this annual report. It's certainly very informative for us as a board, as a gauge to how our learners are doing and, you know, as, as it says up there, our focus is on the learner. And so this really helps focus our. Conversations and, and sort of the trends and the flows that are happening in classroom. I just wanted to note the declining. Literacy performance and, you know, this is a trend we're seeing province wide certainly, but. As the report has noted and in, you know, in conver, in conversation with staff, you know, that, that, that really is the focus. Moving into this year, and so I'm, I'm super glad that staff has really put that focus there. And also a special thanks to, for including ELL data in, in all of our reporting because obviously. That's not something that the ministry requires school districts to do, in fact, school trustees, we raised that issue. At B C S C A in the past, urging the province to collect this sort of data province wide, but. The fact that we're, we're doing that on our own volition, I think, it really speaks to our, our focus again on. Our ELL learners, which is a significant proportion in Richmond. And a last thing I'll say is that, you know. We, we keep, I, I think the, our conversation oftentimes comes back to the fact that we're. Above the provincial average on, you know, a lot of measures and that's certainly a good thing and should be celebrated. The flip side of that is we, we can't simply just sit back on that, on, on that narrative, we need to. Continue to drive student success. And I've always been a proponent of yes and, and so a lot of our work will certainly be yes and for all students. And then meeting them where they're at, so thank you.
Trustee Sergeant, followed by trustee Beliza.
Yeah, thanks very much. I know this is a lot of work. But I also remind myself that this is a snapshot of what is happening in our district and we need to take that data. And I'm really pleased that you developed your own, not you personally, but. Your own data collecting tool to measure what is, what is this coming out at that people don't, students don't feel they belong. I really appreciate that and I think we can do that in more areas. I think this is a ministry document and they are focusing on priority populations and I understand that and I think that's important. But I really note all the notes that you have put, put in here on ELL students and I think. You know, it's quite a mess because sixty two percent of our kids are really, really important and they need to know that we're strategizing. We're hearing, we're strategizing, we're developing goals and that the ministry needs to hear that too, so that they can make changes at their end. So I did bring it up at Metro meeting last week because Metro, we have common thoughts and so hopefully there'll be some change. At least requiring boards to report on it and show due diligence around that, I think is really, really important. So I really applaud staff for putting the notes on all of that because every note is, is a little kid. And I do note the, you know, FSAs aren't the be all end all. They are a snapshot and they don't tell the whole story and so what I'll be looking for. With our strat plan, et cetera, is building on this report with the stories that we have. That our staff are working as, as President Babastock talked about, those teachers that are assessing from day one. And the anecdotal assessing is so very important. FSA is again, it, it's a snapshot. And I know we have to, we're required to do this report, I think it's a good look. But I think we need to build on other things and sometimes these percentages are not really factual. In that what is really happening on the ground. So I know our staff are going to deep dive all this and we're going to have a great strat plan. So I, I really appreciate that and again, the mess with ELL, I think needs to be noted formally somehow. Any venue I'm in, I'm, I'm speaking to it and I know you will as well in your ministry discussions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Trustee Beliza, followed by trustee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know some of this, I've been touched by trustee Young comments. First of all, thanks and appreciation to the district, especially to our teachers and staff for making sure that. Our district in terms of numeracy, literacy and especially graduation rate are far better than the provincial average. But there is some areas of concern, especially in. But there is some areas of concern, especially in page 65 and also corresponding numeracy brands. I hate to mention FSA scores, literacy scores. It has been declining two or three years. Grade four, grade seven, grade 10, both numeracy and literacy. Should we consider this as a concern? Or if it is, what can we do about it? Making sure that we realize or accomplish the goal of, our strategic goal of students inspired or student success. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Anytime we see results trending downwards, of course, we are concerned. We have some theories about why that might be happening as noted in the report. But we are also really focused on literacy as a district through some of those strategies that are outlined. Of course, we have the pillars of numeracy, or sorry, the pillars of literacy that are in play right now and teachers are assessing their students' literacy at the beginning of the year so that they can plan for instruction. As President Baberstock noticed, some of those anecdotal assessments that they're doing, as well as the screeners and reading assessments that are aligned with the proficiency that the ministry expects through the curriculum. All of that helps provide a clear picture for a teacher about what the learners in their classroom need so that they are improving in their literacy. So I think all of those strategies combined and that coordinated effort is really going to help make a difference for, for our learners as we, as we are now a number of years out of the pandemic and we're getting past anything that might have been any gaps that happened during that time and really focusing on literacy and also, literacy and also numeracy in the district.
So my question is that you say that 2025, 2026, 2027 year have a new strategy of will be is for the SPARK screener. So what's that the SPARK screener can work for? And is that just on the grade one?
So the SPARK screener is a, it started for just kindergarten to assess students phonemic awareness. So those are their pre-literacy skills. So there are a number of skills that are assessed for a kindergarten student to, and that assessment happens in the fall and in the spring. So a teacher has a sense of how students have progressed through the year and what phonemic skills they need to help them be ready to read. And then that phonemic assessment has been expanded now to grade one with additional skills. So the grade one student would be assessed where they left off in the spring in terms of their phonemic awareness. And then a teacher again has that information so they know what skills the grade one learner needs in order to, whether they're already reading or whether they're almost reading to make sure that they have those pre-reading skills.
The follow-up will be go grade two and grade three way, is that?
Yeah, so the ministry has a literacy initiative that will include screening for K to three in the next few years.
With my sporting background, I have to say that I'm really pleased that we have this coaching program. I think it builds on the relationships that you develop and also to that sense. All right, on that note, we do have a recommendation that the Board of Education approve the ESLR for submission to the Ministry of Education and Childcare for October 1st, 2025, the submission deadline. I'm looking for a mover and a seconder, trustee Yang, followed and seconded by trustee, or sergeant. Assuming we've had plenty of discussion, all in favor? Post, the recommendation is. All right, we are now going to move on to new business. And starting off, we have a summer learning 25 highlights update from district administrator. Continue it then, Jason Higle.
Well, we're waiting for the slides to show up. Just good evening, everyone, and thank you very much for inviting me here tonight to celebrate and share some of the exciting programs that we offered through our continuing education department, specifically our summer learning programs. I will also just point out that I'm not just going to highlight, most of my highlight will be on summer learning, but I also wouldn't mind just pointing out some other summer programs that we offer during the summertime, just very briefly. So before I begin, I just wanted to start off by informing everyone that summer learning is just really one program under our continuing education department. Other programs that are under our umbrella include adult secondary, adult secondary full credit courses and English courses, our Mandarin language studies, our Richmond Education Assistant Programs, our Youth and Children's Programs, Richmond Virtual School, Settlement Workers in Schools, and today mostly focusing and highlighting our summer learning programs for school age students. I wanted to also mention that our focus is, in our summer learning programs are to offer opportunities where all students can find a program of interest or need. And I know that this, we'll be looking at new strategic priorities and districts' strategic plan. But for the moment, we're still aligning our summer programs to provide welcome and engaging school environments where all students can thrive and to support all learners so that they can successfully complete their education with a sense of dignity, purpose, and options. And we look forward to the new strategic plan as we can align our summer program goals with the district's plans. This summer, you know, really happy to report that over the last three years that I've taken over for the summer learning programs, we've seen an increase in registrations. We started last three years ago at about 5,200 registrations and we're now at 6,800 plus registrations for this last summer. That's a huge success and it's a huge success because we have a great, great team of summer leading, summer learnings teachers as well as support staff that are willing to donate their time over the summertime to work together and collaborate and provide meaningful educational experiences for our students over the summertime. For me, one of the things that we've really focused on is not just providing opportunities for students to learn, but to make sure that it's inclusive. And so by that, over the past few years, we've been working really hard as a team to provide supports for not just for all learners, specifically for those that have diverse abilities and disabilities, as well as those that have an ELL, that are ELL students. It hasn't been easy to do in a very short timeframe, but we had an amazing team of resource teachers, ELL teachers, counselors, counseling team, as well as our hearing and vision teachers and as well as our Vancouver Coastal Health team partners that work together to ensure that our students had this inclusive experience. And I also wanted to point out that 6,800 registrations is the final number, but one of the things I like to point out is that we are at 7,400 registrations at one point. And so the office team was very busy, as you can imagine, over just a number of days to really sort out the ins and outs of, you know, 700 students that are needing to be phone called, translated, and also supported so that we can accommodate all those registrations and all the needs that come along with that. You know, just really quickly, I think many of us, I have done this report before, but I'd like to highlight some of the programs within our summer programs. Our full credit program was running strong again, both offering at, offers at Stephson London Secondary and McNair Secondary. Students enrolled either to upgrade their standing in a course or to gain additional course credits. Full credit and summer learning is not just a Richmond student opportunity, but it's open for students in the private school sector as well as outside of our district. But majority of our students are Richmond students. We also have, on the other end of the spectrum, Inspiration Program was being offered again. We expanded that to 12 different elementary schools. These are programs that schools invite students to come because they would benefit for various reasons. We offered at each site a grade two, three, and a four, five grade program. And at Cook, we also offered a grade six, seven program. The focus for this program is on curriculum, learning standards, and literacy, numeracy, as well as the fine arts. We also work collaboratively with Ian Lai on our Feeding Futures program to provide healthy snacks to those students that were in the Inspiration Program. Another program that was offered over the summertime and we kind of slightly changed it. We used to have the Summer Innovation Exploration Program. We kind of changed that now to re-branded as Summer Innovation, which is focused on technology and hands-on activities. But we also created an outdoor learning program that accompanied that site. This took place at Break House and it, it included not only some interdisciplinary inquiry-based learning projects as well as hands-on activities with digital devices and technology to support their student learning. But we also, as I mentioned, created at this site and expanded to include outdoor explorations which focused on learning intentions that are integrated into the outdoor learning environment. And again, this year we had three large sites that were offering summer enrichment programs that were just a variety of different options and courses. These are ministry-focused and ministry-connected courses, course offerings with a variety of high school and elementary at these sites. The sites were Boyd, McNeil, and Burnett. And again, we, other than the literacy and numeracy offerings, we expanded. Last year we offered financial literacy and Japanese language courses and this year we expanded those offerings and they were very successful. Again, this year we offered the Summer Fine Arts, which was a very popular program. Because of its popularity, we had it at Homa again on the west side, but we also expanded this opportunity to Mitchell on the east side. We felt this was catering to the demand, but also an opportunity for equitable access for our students across Richmond. At this program, we offered a variety of inquiry-based and hands-on experiences in all four areas of the fine arts curriculum, which included visual arts, dance, and, oops, arts, dance, drama, and music. And more recently, we just finished at the end of the summer. We start at the beginning of the summer and we end at the last week of summer, our Connections Program, which offers grade seven students to go to their Palmer Catchment Area Secondary School and it helped provide a transition to secondary school students who focused on building connections to their new school setting while being introduced to some curricular-focused learning intentions. A couple of years ago, I think you might remember that we started our inquiry to summer leadership through experiential learning. It was an opportunity for our students to, to learn about leadership and what it means to be a leader. These students had the opportunity to also gain some experiential, experience of leadership in our summer programs. This year, we had over 100 students that participated in this leadership summer program. And what was great about this was we had invited former trustee Wendy Lim as well as former district administrator Glenn Kishi to come in and kick off our leadership workshop with their new book that they had written to sort of share their resources with our summer student leadership, leadership students. And last but not least, we have our fee-paying camps that are always popular. Fee-paying camps, as you may remember, are for elementary students. They only get one free ministry-funded course for the summertime. And so fee-paying court camps are giving that option for students to actually stay for a longer period of time. We don't offer, we offer a lot of these camps, but it's also limited to the space and obviously, you know, making sure that we have these different options at the different sites. Some of these fee-paying camps are Art Around the World, Bammerton, Cooking and Baking, Cooking Around the World, Creative Art and Maker Camps, Tech Art Camps, as well as a new one called Music Maker Camp. So those are the summer learning programs that we had in our program. And I mentioned that I just highlighted some of the other programs, summer offerings that we had in our other programs, one of them being the REAP Richmond Education Assistant Program. The full-time program started in July and will end this December. And to date, I just wanted to point out that we have had approximately 450 REAP students participate in our part-time and full-time programs since 2016. We also, over the summertime, offered a third semester of what we call our Richmond Virtual School. This is in a district online learning program that's offered in our district for Richmond students only. The third semester ran over the summertime and over 1,200 students participated in this program, getting their full credits. And we had, that involved 25 teachers that were part of our staff. And last but not least, the Settlement Workers in Schools team. Actually, they do a lot of great work during the school year, but what you may or may not know is that over the summertime, they're connecting with the libraries to introduce families to some of the Richmond Public Library offerings, whether it's library tours, family readings, or even STEAM activities. They also put on and organize some family tour, tours, which involve going to BCIT, Quantlin College, also some of the, our National Museum here, at the Canary Museum, with our volunteer youth leaders. And there was also some information sessions that they put on for our families over the summertime just to help with those families that are new immigrants, to help them be settled and also to give them that wraparound information so that they're better equipped to be not only living in our community, but also being successful in our schools. To end with, I just want to conclude that again, our summer learning, bouncing back to our summer learning programs, we had over 6,800 course registrations. We had 21 different schools that offer these programs throughout the district. And we had over 200 summer staff. And I just. Continuing to support our summer programs, but also the amazing work that our staff had engaged in over the summertime to provide meaningful educational experiences for our students around learning. So, thank you very much and, and just want to thank all of you for your support.
Being programs, is the goal basically cost recovery, like breakeven? Or do we make a profit on the fee-paying program?
Yeah, it's a really good question, trustee chair, Amaguchi. We, we, obviously, we're not in the business of business. We're in the offer of course offerings and so we do make enough to cover the cost. These, these camps are, fee-paying camps are actually, have some materials that are involved. Whereas our ministry-funded camps, we don't actually really provide a lot of resources. The students usually use their own pencils and paper. But in the fee-paying courses, the materials cost is what we use and to cover that as well as the staffing cost. So yes, it's just more of a cost recovery. Yep.
Trustees, questions? Trustee Larson?
They were before me on that side. Great, well, I just wanted to thank you for really trying to revamp and rework this summer learning program to the needs of our community and really the diversity that you're, not only for the students, but the courses and the offerings is fantastic. I'm just wondering how you go about surveying or getting feedback after the courses from the people that take them and, and how does that help you plan for the next year?
That's a really good question and thank you for that. You know, historically, we actually used to do some surveys. This year, we actually didn't. We get lots of feedback from parents through our email and through our office. And so we also, at the end of each of the summer programs, survey our staff as well to just sort of hear their voices in order to cater to any changes of self-improvement for our, our department. So, you know, I think the other thing we're taking, being mindful of is a little song and dance because we also have only certain teachers that want to work over the summertime in a certain number, as well as we're, we're dealing with certain space issues around schools because, you know, we work very closely with our facilities department because as you can appreciate during that time, there's lots of work that needs to be done at these facilities. And so we're just trying to balance all of the, all of that with what we have as in terms of qualifications and the space that we're using and listening to our customers' voices.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I would just say, students always tell you what they want to see and do next year.
Absolutely.
I think somehow gathering the student voice would be really, really good.
Yep, that's great, great. We'll definitely take that into consideration in the future here. Thank you.
trustee Beliza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for a great report in enhancing student learning. I'm more interested to learn more about language, language course or program, i.e. the Mandarin language. I'd like to know what are the requirements to offer a certain language and who are qualified to enroll? And fees and other, other stuff to be, you know, important in the offering of this course.
Yeah, and so I just took, just.
Especially the fees.
Yes, well, I think there's sort of two parts to this. One is our summer. One is our summer programs, for the most part, are funded by the ministry. And so, all of our courses, aside from the fee-paying courses, are connected to curriculum. And so, any language courses that we offer over our summer learning programs are ministry-funded and connected to those language courses, such as Japanese, such as our French language courses for core French, as well as our French language courses for immersion students. Interestingly, our language, our Japanese courses are quite popular. Our French courses are not as popular, but we offer them because we also have our French immersion students and our core French students that, a smaller population that want to participate in the summer program. So those are connected to curriculum. I think what you might be talking about is our Mandarin Language Studies programs, which doesn't run over the summertime, but runs during the school year. Those are fee-paying. And so, we have not qualified teachers for that, because it's not connected to the ministry. But we have instructors that we train to offer those language experiences.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm often on drop-off and pickup at mostly Boyd. And what thrills me to see is the kids are happy going and they're happy being picked up. And for so long, when there was that stigma about summer school and, oh, we don't want to go to summer school, it's just more work. And whatever is happening within those doors, they're learning more and just, I think, and they're having fun. They're making friends. I think it's just wonderful to see the spirit when people bring the kids out or when they meet them outside. It's really beautifully run, I think, as somebody, like I say, I remember kids in the school being upset that they had to go to summer school. And now, I think a lot of kids think of it as almost like it's not camp, but it's not really school either. It's a learning place, but it's a fun place.
Well, thank you for that perspective and voice. And I just have to say that continuing education is exactly that. It's just a continuation of learning for students, for those options. And what a great equitable access to education for all our students. And I think our job is just to make sure that we're continuing to offer, continue to listen to students' voices and continue to see how we can continue to offer it for all. Right? So how can we be more inclusive?
Inclusive. That is just to see that there's, there's resource teachers there, there's, you know.
Yeah, no, thank you. And it comes at the cost of some really hard work done by our resource team and our EAs and our district that want to work over the summertime to support our students with diversities and disabilities. So thank you.
Important, thank you.
Mr. Wong?
Thank you, Chairman. So my question is the full credit. This is really attractive, the secondary school students. I just listened to you that is accept that others at school district not in, live in Richmond. So is that with a priority to support our district students first?
I think, I think what you're asking, trustee Wong, is that we offer a little bit more of an inclusive registration for not just our Richmond students, for all students. Ministry guidelines say that as long as you're an ordinary resident of British Columbia, you can take these courses. And the history in our district has always been to offer it outside of just our Richmond students, partially, I think, because there's so many different private schools within the city of Richmond, right? And also because there's very few that maybe their, their, their own districts don't offer what we're offering. And so, they might want to come here or there's other reasons. Majority of our students are Richmond students, so Richmond School District students. And our full-credit courses are obviously credited and they match the 80-hour minimum hours that are required over the summertime to provide that education.
True.
Right. Thank you very much for your report. Would you, Mr. Yank?
Thank you very much, Chairperson. I just want to echo thanks for your update and certainly something we look forward to every September, to see how learners are doing in the summer, because learning just doesn't stop just because you're out of school in June. There's a lot of opportunities. So thank you. And so, a quick question I had was that, you know, obviously, there's a diverse offering of programs and I think that's great. I think the community expects us to do that. But I guess just in terms of the duration, like the length of the day-to-day of these program, are they full day? Do they run for the entirety, like as we do for the regular programming? Is it kind of like morning and then afternoon?
Yeah, so really good question. And it really, the short story is, the short answer is, there's a variety of different offerings that we provide for the summertime. Full credits are 80 hours minimum. And in fact, ours are 80 and a half hours over 23 days. Some courses are offered four weeks, some courses are offered three weeks, some courses are offered over a week. And so, there's a variety of different sort of course offerings to be, to provide options and flexibility. For elementary students, they can only take one course that's funded for free, but they can also pay for a fee-paying course or camp in order to make their day a little bit longer. For secondary students, they can take up to two full-credit courses in their schedule. I don't advise it, it's very heavy. But they can also take three, up to three enrichment, non-credit courses in a, in a summer day for the four weeks. So kind of gives you a bit of an idea of the timeframe and the course offerings as it applies to the hours in the day.
Certainly, yes. And keep up the good work. Thanks very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Thank you for your report. Keep doing what you're doing.
Great. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.
Moving on to our next item, we're looking for a recommendation regarding the new city center school naming process. Reported in your package from community chairperson, trustee de Blotney.
Yeah.
Blotney, anything you want to add or highlight on your, from your report?
Well, I was gonna kind of speak to the report first and then put the motion on the table. Because, you know, at the end of the school year, we did acquire a new city center school, which we were delighted to have for, at 8671 Oddlin Crescent. And it's projected to open in September 2026. And so, in preparation for the opening, of course, it's going to have to have a name. It was years ago, Eber Elementary, but it has been a couple of names since. And so, at the June 18th board in-camera meeting, we established, the board established a committee that is in accordance with Policy 701.11R. And that is the policy that's guiding us through the whole process. And the committee consists of my fellow trustees, trustee Sergeant and trustee Yang, as well as three staff members, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, equity, diversity and inclusion, and the secretary treasurer. And as with other committees, trustees are the voting members, while the staff members are just, they're providing support to us. So the committee has, in the report, put forward a proposed committee terms of reference. And that's according to Section 14.3, Policy 201 bylaw. And so, we developed the terms of reference. And we receive, the proposed committee terms of reference will be as follows. Receive review, conduct research on public submissions of the new school name to ensure alignment with our board-approved criteria, ensure recommendations of shortlist and final proposed name aligning with the board's values, policies and approved criteria. Consider input from the education partners in the broader community and provide a summary report, recommended shortlist of names and a final recommendation of a new school name for the board's consideration and approval. And we have a proposed school naming selection criteria. And so, what's proposed is the board committee may consider, may consider using followed criteria to guide and develop approval of the shortlist of school names and final recommendation. So one is geographical, geographic relevance. So the school names may be chosen to reflect the school's location or nearby geographical features, indigenous history and language. And so, if a place-based name that acknowledges and honors indigenous history, such as one with Spalakwaks, or is an indigenous language is being considered, we will seek early engagement and involvement with the appropriate indigenous communities and rights holders. To avoid confusion, the school names should avoid causing confusion with other schools, of course, in neighboring areas and districts. And ensure that a facility name stands the test of time. It must reflect the spirit and intent of the board's vision, mission of values, of course. And when reviewing names of persons, the following should be considered, taken into consideration, that it can be difficult to select one person when many have merits and we have many in our community. And that no person is perfect and flaws brought forward. A vote of suggested namesake can negatively affect their legacy and reputation in the community. And we've seen this in other places, but not in Richmond. So with that in mind, there is a proposed naming process that is being put forward by board motion. And if you want, I can speak about the process, but I will put the recommendation on the floor. And so, this naming process would start once the board, if the board approves it tonight and would go for about approximately three months. It's all in the report here. So anyway, I will put the motion on the floor, which is that the Board of Education approve the school naming committee terms of reference, school naming selection criteria and the new city center school naming process as presented in this report.
Thank you. And I'm looking for a second. Trustee Yang.
Okay.
Second. Any further discussion?
I just wanted, I'm just looking at the timeline. So yeah, it would be a three-month submission period as per the policy. And then, the school naming committee would then kick in again. We would create a shortlist and, and hopefully, by May 2026, we will have a name after all the process is done, so.
Once in, well, should it be May? It's been seconded and I'm looking for all in favor?
Good question.
Can we have discussion first before we vote?
Discussion, all right. Go ahead, trustee.
So far, the term of reference, I'm in favor of the motion, but just trying to ask how do we reach out? For example, just for example, people who knows about indigenous history, culture, you know, and I don't know if we have one enrichment in the name of the indigenous people. But just, just for information, how do we reach the people who we would like to submit or the people who want to submit or any submission with regard to the naming of the school?
Our, can I answer that? Our, sorry, I keep getting my earring caught on my collar. Our Director of Communications has quite a detailed plan on how this will filter out into the community. And that will include, you know, social media or website, et cetera, possibly newspapers and other ways. We're not necessarily reaching out to the indigenous community. Anybody can, can submit a, you know, a proposal to us. So all the terms of reference we're saying was that if we did receive one, then we would have to look to the appropriate person or appropriate indigenous organization.
Are we, Mr. Chairman, are we publishing this in the newspaper and widely circulation enrichment?
Yes.
That everybody will be aware and it's fair for everyone?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sergeant?
Yeah, thank you. I don't want to put Mr. Sadler on the spot, but I'm wondering if he could just speak quickly to
I was wondering about that.
The process and noting that there is a form also on the website. So as soon as we pass this, my understanding, it will go on right away on the website. But I wonder if Mr. Sadler could just speak to, if I was the person in the public, what would I do next after tonight? If that's, I'm just asking, is that procedurally okay? Because we have not, we haven't really, we haven't passed this yet, but I think sooner or later
If we were to pass it, what would be the?
What's that? Sorry. If we were to pass this tonight, what would be the process? So theoretically, Mr. Sadler.
Through the chair, theoretically, if it were to pass, there, tomorrow, there would be a webpage as identified in the plan where the public could go to that website. They could receive all the background information about the process. There would be forms available for them to go through the process. And we'll also be communicating and sharing that information through all their school websites, through the district website, through our social media channels as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Larson?
I just want to thank the committee. I think this is excellent. And I think you've done a really good job setting up the terms of reference. It's got a good process. And what David's just shared with us, I think, is really good work. So thank you very much for all of that. It's exciting.
Any more comments, questions? All right. I'm going to call the question, all in favor? Host, I think the recommendation is carried.
Okay.
Everyone, be tuned. Moving on to our last piece of new business is we have a motion regarding school traffic safety. Trustee Yang, I believe that is you. You'd like to address it?
Certainly. Thank you very much, Chairperson. And so, I requested this item to be on the public agenda tonight. And certainly, as we all know, Richmond, most of our schools have seen increased enrollment. And that means more folks on our sidewalks, more folks on our streets and more cars flowing into drop-off zones. You know, over the last several years, you know, conversations with community members, parents, road users, there's a common thread in that they are, you know, concerned about what we can, about school traffic safety around our schools. And so, with back to school this month, those conversations have certainly resurfaced. And, you know, from, from just my general observation as a road user myself, you know, there are certain themes that still persist. For example, you know, the fact that there's quite a bit of speeding on our, on our streets in our schools. You know, folks that are concerned about our students when they're playing at playgrounds near the streets and whenever they're commuting to school at a crosswalk or on the pedestrian sidewalk. And also, just around, you know, some of our busier schools, the drop-off zones, that could be a bit of a challenge during pickup of drop-off time. All that's to say, I think, there's more work to be done from my view, because the way I see it is that there, there's there's more work to be done from my view because the way I see it is that there, there's a bit of inconsistency when it comes to what the city of Richmond has in terms of their practices and policies on school traffic safety. And with that, also a kick, just a curiosity on our own front because of course behind, on the side of the property line that we do own, that's certainly our prerogative. And so, you know, those questions do remain as to whether or not we're doing enough to address public, the public's concerns around school traffic safety. So with that, and I can certainly speak to my motion, but Chairperson, whenever you're ready, I'm just going to move the motion, perhaps maybe you know, questions or comments right now, but I'll, I'll, I'll move the motion when, when ready.
Have some discussion. Is there any discussion, any question, comments? Trustee Sergeant, followed by trustee Beliza.
See, school traffic safety is, is extremely important to all of us. And it's been the work of many of us for many, many years making, oh, the motion's gone. Sorry. I, I do think I do have some, so obviously it's, it's extremely important to make sure our children are safe and their parents walking to and from school. My concern with this motion is it separates the work between, thank you, between the, the school or the city of mayor and council and us as a school. And some of the, the first part of that motion is contemplating some suggestions, which I get, expansion of school zone hours, increased traffic calming, upgrades to pedestrian walkways, crosswalks, additional measures, et cetera. So, so those are big, big asks. And so I, I don't really want to send all this work to city council because what we have, you know, there would need to be some reporting back out to us, to our school district staff. Some of these things are not effective in some of the schools in some of the areas. We actually have a traffic safety advisory committee run by the, the city of Richmond where we sit with our CMP, our staff and many smart professionals on the topic of traffic safety. So I would see something like this going to that because I really do think it's not separate work. And then the work for, you know, directing our staff to investigate traffic safety enhancements only on board owned school properties, including but not limited to. I just think we're a city together and that I think we, we can't really separate the two. If you're going to look at traffic calming, the school needs to be involved because I've, I've been involved with traffic calming and it definitely is the school, the community that works together. Not everybody likes traffic calming or wants it in their street. So for me, this separates the work too much. And then the, the first part of that, there's no reporting back to us. I, I don't want the city to go off and start doing some things to, to our schools or to access to our schools without it. So I'm just wondering if the mover would consider this important topic, if it would be moved to the current Traffic Safety Advisory Committee rather than to the city of Richmond. And I would be, I don't know if that might not be a friendly amendment, but would the mover consider that where joint people work on these joint issues together, not separately, and that there is reporting back out and the expertise of both parties is working on it rather than in silos? So I guess the question is, would the mover be okay with sending this rather than to city council and requesting a comprehensive citywide review? Would the mover be okay with this moving to the current Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, TSAC, at the city of Richmond, along with us? So it's a question to the mover.
Do we need a, her emotion or?
Well, I can make an amendment, but I'm wondering if, if the mover would be amenable to.
All right, let's go through some questions. Yes. And then we'll come back. Trustee Beliza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I share some comments with the trustee sergeant here that there are two separate tasks being requested here. One from the city to identify additional traffic measures. And to the staff, potential traffic safety enhancement board on school properties, including, but that's limited to signage and speed bumps. Now, I'd like to know from the proponent, mover of the motions, whether there are any some kind of concern arising from the schools that would probably give this kind of the motion regarding traffic safety. And another concern I have, does this involve creations and revisions of our policy and regulation? What kind of impact insofar as the city policies concerned? And whether there are some kind of consultations from respect, different schools that we have regarding the need for this kind of motion? Thank you.
I'm just going to ask trustee Yang just to hold off any kind of response. And let's go through the line here and we'll start at the end next. You trustee Tabloni, followed by trustee Wong, if you want to say something again, trustee Larson.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I, you know, I think this motion is, it's a good motion. It's timely. You know, schools, when you go out to schools and even when my kids were in school, I spent a lot of time on traffic safety. There were always problems. There were always things that could be looked at differently, always changes that individual schools wanted. And, and every time I go out and visit a school, I hear about traffic safety and issues with pickup and drop off and people speeding and not, not following the school zones. And, you know, I can't, I can't say we've ever had a comprehensive citywide review. And yes, we do have a traffic safety advisory. But, you know, there's all kinds of things to consider. And then there's consider, the, I like, what I like about this motion is it also has directs our staff to investigate, you know, our traffic safety enhancements on, on our own properties. Because, you know, there have been things that parents have asked for because they're the users of the, the parking lot or the drop off and pickup. So, you know, I think, I think this is a good motion. And I don't see why we can't just write to city council. They'll direct where it goes and what they do with it. I mean, we have no jurisdiction over that. I'm sure we can also, you know, put the, the motion, if it passes on to our council board liaison agenda as well to discuss. There's no reason why we couldn't. But, you know, I, I, what the motion is asking for is that the board write to Richmond City Council requesting this. And I mean, they, they know where they would send it. Their staff will even direct them as to where they'll want to send it. So I don't think there's any harm in passing this motion. It'll probably end up in the right place and it'll end up in the right place for, for our staff as well. So, you know, I'm, I'm definitely in support of anything that we can do to protect our kids inside, on, on, on our district properties and outside our district properties and walking to school.
Wong, you didn't have your hand up, did you? Want to, any comment, your guess?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Chairman. So everyone, just like trustee, parents in the school, I mean, they are all just concerned about schools' traffic safety. This motion is really important. As some of the, just like right on there, I, I would like to ask, what's the expansion of the school zone hours for what? And every, just like, after the school, new school year, new school year, every district, school district, everywhere have, just like, they have an increasing traffic cramming. And upgrade to pedestrian walk, by, walkway and crosswalks. This is the city's responsible, is when, so some resident is request or everything, they will did that. So I'm not sure why we need to just like go to the city council. So, you know, Richmond have a safe, traffic safety advisor committee. So when is that the just like pet and administrator of school and go to just like concern about the traffic of the, their, their school? So is there contact with the city's Richmond staff? They will do that improvement or ask you everything, request to do that. So we just think about is more politely, is that if you write this all in, I just think is that you teach me how to do or not? Yeah, thank you. You just concern about that. Yeah.
Trustee Larson.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fully behind this motion, seeing what's happening around the schools everywhere, really. There's not a lot of necessary consistency in the traffic calming and the upgrades to pedestrian walkways and crosswalks. There's crosswalks nearby a school where the hedge is like a foot and a half onto the sidewalk and kids are walking onto the, the bike lane because they're brushing into the hedge. So I think, I think I like this as a separate motion to council as opposed to the traffic safety committee, which I'm most impressed with. There's nothing wrong with it. But I think this brings a little more attention to some of the areas that maybe haven't been looked at for quite a while. I think we're asking to have it reviewed. And as it mentions, trustee Yang has mentioned, which may include but not limited to. I think that's, there's some good ideas that may, may, may be used, may not, may be built on. So I'm, I'm fully behind. I think this is, it's needed and there's a lot of speed. The speed is amazing around school district. I'm tired of slowing my car down to slow people down behind me because it, it's dangerous. And I've seen areas where they've put in the, the spongy speed bumps around Lord Bing, around West Wind, couple of other areas, and, and it's made a difference. So I think there's other areas that need to be looked at. So fully back this.
Yang, before you answer anything, I'm going to, my piece. I think there are a lot of good points have been raised tonight. And when I look at this as sort of being a two-part sort of motion that we are requesting a comprehensive citywide review of school zone to identify, we are requesting, which means we're asking. Ultimately, because I, in terms of us directing the staff of another entity, even though city hall, that we want you to do this, I don't think we have that mandate. But as it says in the, in the motion that we are requesting a comprehensive, now hopefully, we hope that it gets done, but they may come up with an alternative. The second part of it is asking our own staff to do it, to look at the safety enhancements on board owned school properties. Yeah, I mean, our staff are busy and they have a lot of things on their plate. I just think that when it comes to safety, especially when it comes to students, it's really hard to sort of look the other way. And the, the February deadline, I wish there was a little more flexibility on that. But in general, you know, I support the motion as well. And like I said, basically what we're doing is we're asking the city to provide this comprehensive report. And, and then we're asking our staff, well, as I said, we don't really have control over city staff, but we do over our own district staff. So.
Yeah, well, if, if, if it's okay with you, Chairperson, I'll just put it on the floor now, the, the motion. So I'll move that the Richmond Board of, yeah, the Board of Education recognize the importance of traffic safety in school zones and on board owned school properties. And further that, the board write to Richmond City Council requesting a comprehensive citywide review of school zones to identify additional traffic safety measures, which may include but not limited to the following, expansion of school zone hours, increased traffic calming, upgrades to pedestrian walkways and crosswalks, additional measures on, on arterial roads adjacent to existing schools. And further that, the board directs staff to A, investigate and put potentials traffic safety enhancements on board owned school properties, included but not limited to the following considerations, signage, speed bumps, and B, report back to the board with findings and recommendations no later than February 2026. And I will so move.
Hey, moved by trustee Yang and looking for a seconder. Trustee Larson, seconded by trustee Larson. Is there any further discussion? Do you like to speak to it further?
Yeah, I'll speak to it further just to provide more rationale. So what, what's been noted is correct in that the motion is two-piece. So the first piece is to write to Richmond City Council requesting this. We write letters quite frequently to, you know, ministers, provincial government, federal governments, and this is no, not any different in the, in that it is an advocacy motion. And the reason why I listed some of these considerations is because these are what's folks have been talking about. They're talking about these as potential solutions. Particularly when you're looking at expansion of school zone hours, this is something that Vancouver has done. Burnaby has done, so has New West. So the bare minimum of what is required in the Motor Vehicles Act is that on a school day, the hours are to be eight, between eight AM and five PM. And there is language in the act that allows municipalities to expand that. And so that's what these municipalities have done. You know, recognizing that our school system's changed. We have childcare onsite. We have extracurriculars that are beyond current hours. And so I think school zone hours need to reflect that reality. As have been mentioned, we have summer programming that goes beyond the September to June. So that's worth considering. There's also a very important inconsistency I would like to point out, and that is this discrepancy between school zone hours versus playground zone hours. So in the Motor Vehicles Act, playground zones are year round enforced. So if there's a playground zone and it's marked thirty hour, thirty kilometers an hour, that is, that applies year round from dawn to dusk. And a good example of the, this discrepancy is both Tommy Elementary and Deven Baker Elementary, where one side of the school is a playground zone, which has enforcement of this thirty kilometers an hour year round. But on air, on roads that are school zone only, of course, school is out during the summer and is out between those, those hours that are outside of eight to five. And so there is discrepancy there. So is traffic calming, as some trustees have noted, you know, there, there are some schools where the lane actually narrows and that's not the case for every school. So also with speed bumps as well. So I think there's the discrepancy there. Pedestrian walkways and crosswalks, I mean, some schools adjacent streets, they don't have lifted sidewalks. And so that presents dangers. And the last piece I noted in that first part of the motion was on arterial roads. And I think that's also worth consideration as well because right now, there is no thirty kilometers an hour restriction on arterial roads right next to elementary. uh there is no thirty kilometers an hour restriction on arterial roads right next to uh elementary schools. Um, a good example of this is Blundell Elementary, uh also in Garden City Elementary. Uh, all fifty kilometers an hour zones, um the signs do say do not pass, but um uh what effect does that have to en- enhance um safety for for students and staff or everybody in the community? So I noted that in the first part of the mo- uh motion because I think that's something that city council has to address. Um, uh, because that is something in their prerogative. Uh, and then to the second point of the motion, uh, second part of the motion is asking our staff to do the same because, of course, um uh questions will arise on whether or not our practices are consistent uh when it comes to traffic calming. And so it's worth taking a lot look uh on our side of the property line. And uh all that's to say, I think um, you know, there there could be a million reasons why we don't take proactive action to address school traffic safety. But it only takes one accident to impact somebody's life. And I think um as uh decision-makers uh or public education, that's something we need to really keep in mind in that uh protecting the safety of our uh students, our staff, our communities, it's something that is um uh engraved in the work that we do, whether through the uh through the strategic plan or just um are 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 the spirit of this board. And so I I urge trustees to support this motion, and I look forward to debate.
Trustee Sergeant, trustee uh Lisa.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I spent a good majority of my PAC life and trustee life working on traffic safety, so I feel it in my heart, um definitely that school zones have to be safe. Um, my concern again with this motion is sending it, well, asking another body to do a co- comprehensive review. I think what they'll do with this is send it to TSAC, but that's uh beside the point. I think that some of these examples are not something that I would be in favor of, such as current traffic calming tr- um strategies. I have one that we uh fought for um near McKinney Elementary. And in fact, it works, but now it doesn't work. And so each neighborhood, there are new strategies that come forward. Again, the neighborhood needs to be surveyed, so I'm not uh thirty K in arterial uh roads. There's been so much um work on that, and it actually creates an unsafe place if people are going thirty on a on a main street. So a lot of these things have a lot of uh work that needs to go into that. I really do think we shouldn't silo it. I think the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee that reports out to us uh and to um council, really, um, most of their work, I have to say, I'm very pleased, is to do with our schools. So our schools will have a concern. They will bring it forward to our staff, who will then bring it forward to the city staff, who are then with ICBC, RCMP, everybody's working on that to see um what will work best within that neighborhood. Because it it's different in every school. So my concern with this motion is we're sending away this really important discussion, and we're not going to hear back about it. So we're asking them to do a comprehensive citywide review, and we're just getting giving it over to them. We don't say, and please report back uh to TSAC or it's it's not reporting to anything. So we never want to give our strength or um we we always want to hear back from what they are going to potentially uh do in our schools. Um, so I think to me that's a mess, and so I do have an amendment um that I would like to propose. And that amendment is that the Richmond Board of Education recognizes obviously the traffic safety in school zones on board-owned and that the board uh sent the topic of a review of a s- of school zones to identify additional traffic safety measures which may include blah 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 to the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. And if there's um a seconder, I can speak a little bit to why I think that motion will really um help solve the problem, not just send it over to them.
Okay, so we have and um looking for a second. Second by trustee Wong.
So again, begin with the end in mind. Um, we all think this is really important. It's extremely important, but it's how you want it to be solved. And I think we have to solve it together. We are not separate entities, and I don't want the city going around to each of the schools and doing whatever they feel is important. They need to talk to our staff who manage the facility. And so um I think the intent is absolutely the same. We want a comprehensive review, but give it to TSAC. And then it also shows the city, city count mayor and council that the committee that they formed is valuable and important. Not that we want to start something separate because they're not really effective. So anyways, that's my amendment. Thank you.
Trustee Wong, did you you have your hand up?
No.
Okay, trustee Belisa.
Just comment for both the motion and amended motion. I agree that Richmond Board of Education recognized the importance of traffic safety in school zones and board-owned properties. When we say comprehensive and citywide review, we I anticipate that the city will also inquire from the school district their concerns. And this I can further that insofar as the staff is concerned, enhancement on board-owned school properties. We are trying to limit. I think it's a limitation on the part of the school to enhance only insofar as within board-owned school properties. To me, uh, I think every school see not only within the area, but of course, it's a shared responsibility of the city and the schools insofar as school zone area. So to my, to relate both because whatever report from the schools on February, we can use this in the review of the city. And so far, our stand is concerned because we will be asked, what's your comment on this? So that's why I asked whether or not this motion arises from the uh concerns of the schools in our school district. So if I were to consider, I would I would expand the enhancement of the uh investigation to school zone to equate and to uh uh align with the first paragraph of the motion to school zone instead of board-owned properties and report back to the board with findings and recommendation no later than February twenty twenty six or board considerations. So I'd like to see that if the proponent is willing to, you know, consider.
If we're taking questions and comments regarding the amendment, uh trustee, I'm gonna let you speak last, but trustee Tavlani, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I think um as I said, sending it to council um can, you know, they 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 know where they're gonna send it off. It could go to traffic and safety advisory. It can go to other places possibly as well. I think that if you're concerned about a report back to the board, um definitely when we write to Richmond City Council, that can be put in the letter. So I think we can cover that one without changing or amending the motion in any way. Um, I prefer it went to council to let them know we're concerned about this and that it goes to full council, not just council board. And um and then it and then it would, you know, cir- they their um councillors, along with the mayor, will direct it to where it needs to go and to which staff members it needs to it that need to attend to it. So um personally, I I like the motion the way it stands, so I'll vote against the amendment, only because I think, you know, in that this motion kind of covers the whole gamut. Thanks.
Trustee Yang, final word on the amendment.
Yes, and certainly, uh, I'll speak to this quickly. I think um I think this really warrants the attention of Richmond City Council, given uh um that the 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 importance, as we said, around the table, uh around how important it is to ensure its traffic safety, and they deserve to know and to hear from us. And uh, you know, uh to trustee sergeant's point, you know, we always write letters. We don't always hear back, but we keep writing because uh it's the right thing to do to advocate for our communities. And so um I have no hesitation on that. Uh, and um, you know, in in terms of the comments made around, um, you know, um, the work of the committee, well, you know, uh, I think the the whole intent around this is to be proactive and to uh uh identify these um and identify gaps and uh and uh and shortcomings um before something happens. And uh sometimes when something happens, then that's when school communities tend to go to this uh uh advisory committee. But uh I think for for the sake of uh proactive solutions, I think um I would respectfully vote against amendment.
Thank you everyone. Trustee Sergeant, can you read out your amendment again?
Sure. Um, well, the first part that the Richmond Board of Education recognized the importance of traffic safety in school zones and on board-owned school properties. And oh, so a recognition that we care about that and that the board send the topic of a of a comprehensive review of school zones to identify additional traffic safety measures which may include the following but not limited to uh to the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee.
Can you get that? Okay, so now we're voting on the amendments. Uh, all heard, uh, call them, hold the question, all in favor? Three, all opposed? Okay, uh, M is defeated. We're going back to the initial um motion. Uh, is there any more discussion on the initial motion? Being no one hands up, I'm gonna call a question. All in favor? All opposed? All opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Thank you for the discussion. All right, let's keep moving here. Finally, Ms. Babrastok, we have questions in public. Sorry.
Uh, thank you. Liz Babrastok, President Richmond Teachers Association. So I do actually have one question, and then I'm just gonna briefly uh reflect upon the audited financial statements. So you can see this part I've leafed through a few times, firstly on the computer. Um, but actually, my question um for the Secretary Treasurer, perhaps when the um section comes up on the um from Audit Committee. Um, just on page one hundred and twenty-five, um, the municipal grant spent on sites, which is eighteen point five million approximately. Um, that's a new line that I haven't seen before, so I'd just like to understand um why this year. I think I do understand it, but um I think it would be helpful um for the public as well to understand um that amount because when you look at that and then you look at the surplus, you think it looks bigger. Um, but when I actually go and I look at the operating surplus, it is about four point nine million, which really is on budget. I mean, that is that's hitting the mark in terms of a budget. That is um when you consider um two hundred and eighty-three million for operating. So I do understand that, but I think that would be helpful. The other part that I just want to, and it's always important for me to reflect upon um in the audited financial statements on page one hundred and eighty-four. And this is the special purpose funds. Um, and really, this, you know, is near and dear to the heart of uh teachers across the province, but especially teachers in Richmond. Because the Classroom Enhancement Fund is the fund that really we brought back by our years of uh advocacy, being on strike um and going all the way to the Supreme Court of Canada and and getting a win there and being able to bring back our language. Um, and that fifty million dollars, um, I can't imagine where we would be without it. Because that is, you know, money that is addressing class size, composition pressures, um adding additional specialist teacher staffing, and we wouldn't have that money without that work of of teachers um getting that back. So, you know, I do want to express appreciation for all the teachers um who worked hard um and continue to work hard for uh learning conditions. Yes, they are our working conditions, but they are student learning conditions. And what we're trying to always do is make sure there is additional support for learners in the classroom. And I think that the Classroom Enhancement Fund really speaks to that. Um, but it is a significant amount of money to the Richmond School District. So thank a teacher. Um, the the other just, uh, I do appreciate um the reflection in the long-term outlook. And I know trustees are very well aware of the continued pressures on um public education and funding. And those pressures, the things that the government does not um increase um compensation-related costs. So that is the increased contributions for the CPP, employment insurance, employer health tax, those go up every single year, and there is not more money coming. And if there isn't more money coming in relationship to that, that ultimately means less money for the school district, and really, most importantly, it's less money for classrooms. So I do appreciate the report um because it really does also draw attention to that, which you can also see in the the select standing committee report. So just tying it all together. Thank you.
Okay, we're now gonna move to our standing committee reports. Uh trustee Yang, Audit Committee.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. So uh, yes, the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five audit financial statement is in the uh agenda package. And this year, we've once again retained KPMG as our external auditor. And uh pleased to say that uh this year, the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five audit financial statements are once again a clean audit. Um, they, in the report, you'll see that uh we've noted several matters related to certain uh accounting standards. Um, one of them being uh new somewhat newly introduced uh asset retirement um obligation. And so um we've had discussions around how to best uh measure that. Um, and so um along with other uh minor findings, uh but happy to move that recommendation. And uh the recommendation is that the Board of Education, Richmond, approve the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ended June thirty of twenty twenty-five as presented. And further that the Chair of the Board, the Superintendent of Schools, and the Secretary Treasurer be authorized to sign the off uh audited financial statements.
Yeah, I'm looking for a second for the motion. Uh, trustee Belisa, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor? Oppose? Uh, recommendations carried. Thank you. Uh, now move on to the Education Committee. Uh, trustee Larson.
Yes, minutes of the meeting held on June the eleventh are attached for information. And we had a fantastic meeting, uh, it's day September seventeenth. We were joined by some music teachers and some students, and it was just fantastic. Um, uh, anyway, that uh that was held on, yeah, September seventeenth. The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October fifteenth uh at six o'clock, and hope we'll see people there. Thank you.
I I just would like to ask that on this uh the educational page one nine four, this uh information is not related to this meeting? Is the committee still one nine four?
You, sorry.
One nine four.
What's what's what's?
Just what is that? I just see that there's a related to the May, the report of the May.
So we can we can look at that.
Yeah, look at that, yeah. Yeah, we'll look at that, yeah.
Will we figure that out?
Yep, we will.
Okay, Facilities and Building Committee, committee chair. Minutes of meeting held June fourth are attached for information, meeting was held on Wednesday, September third. Next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October the first, at four thirty P M. Finance Legal Committee, trustee Sergeant.
Thank you. The minutes are there for your purview, and there is a recommendation, which I'll move. Whereas the Board of Education School District Thirty-eight Richmond is paying for expenses incurred by the trustees in the discharge of their duties, be it resolved that in accordance with the School Act, the Board of Education of School District Thirty-eight Richmond approves trustee expenses paid during the three-month period ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-six cents.
Looking for a seconder, trustee Wong, thank you.
And if, sorry, just to speak to it, just to note that a lot of the expenses were for the BCSTA AGM. Thank you.
All right, I'll call the question, all in favor? Opposed? Recommendations carried, thank you. And we can move on to Policy Committee, trustee Tavlani.
Policies, I'll just got something on the go. And it's in page two oh one in your package. This is a recommendation for the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Report from the Committee Chairperson, and this is another one of our minor revisions to existing policies to bring in alignment to the diversity, equity, inclusion, and language checklist. So it's really, you know, housekeeping and does not go into the usual feedback. So it first came to policy on May twelfth in a report, and then to Policy Committee Public. June eighteenth, we gave a notice of motion, and then now it is here before you for approval.
All right. Oh, we have the recommendation.
So the recommendation, oh gosh, I just moved it, hang on. That the Board of Education approve revised policy three one one slash three one one R, Freedom of Information, Protection of Privacy, in accordance with the Board Policy Two oh four, creation revision of policy and regulations.
Looking for a seconder, trustee Yang, thank you. Any further discussion? Trustee Belisa.
Just for clarification, we have the Freedom of Information, which the public could access to, and we have also the FIPA, Freedom of Information's Protections of Privacy Act. Is our staff or the public know what's the the limitation of each act? The other one allows the other one has its own, I would say, provisions. Now, if there's a conflict or concerns, how do we resolve this?
Right, another good hypothetical question. We'll have an answer.
Well, I don't, I'd look to the superintendent or Secretary Treasurer to answer that one.
Yeah, sure, I will attempt to answer that question, thank you, trustee Belisa. So typically, what we do is, we do have our board policy in terms of freedom of information and protection of privacy for all our staff and students. So we stick to the board policy, number one. Number two is, we follow provincial legislation. When there is a request coming from parent, we work through those requests with by following our board policy and legislation, and not only the FIPA, also School Act in terms of the jurisdiction of the school board. If there's any controversial issues, we typically go through our legal counsel for advice. Hopefully, that answers your question.
And, okay. In terms of accountability, if there is a case involving violations of the FIPA, who is accountable to the board or the individuals, or?
Yes, so we follow the legislation. If the request, information request from the public, or public is not happy with our responses, they can make a complaint to the provincial government, to the Privacy Commissioner, and we will, you know, continue to work with the commissioner in terms of making sure the obligations and rights of the board is being protected. And at the same time, we manage the request from the public.
Any injury or damage covered by our insurance, third-party liability insurance, or any insurance for that purpose?
Well, if I may, through the chair, just to add on to the comments from the Secretary Treasurer, what the board should rest assured that when matters come up, and we've dealt with a number of situations in the last little while, the Secretary Treasurer goes through a very detailed process that involves, that I'm involved, depending on what the situation is. But also, specific to your question, trustee Belisa, I think you heard that we engage legal counsel on matters that are critical, so that at no time would actions, will take actions that compromise the board. So when things are complicated, we go to legal counsel and seek some guidance, and then so far, we've not been challenged, to the best of my knowledge, in terms of on matters litigation. But when those things do arise, where there's discrepancy in terms of board policy and our understanding of the legislative, that's when we go to counsel.
All right, thank you. Moving on to our Board Committee and Representative Reports. Or did we not?
I kind of didn't think we did.
Probably not, did, do we vote on the recommendation? No, okay, so recommendation.
It was moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded, I'm gonna call the question, all in favor? Opposed? Recommendations carried, thank you very much. Hey, let's move on to the last section. Board Committee and Representative Reports, Council, Board Liaison Committee members, is there anything you want to report back? Hey, thank you, BCSTA rep, is there anything?
Nothing to report, but Provincial Council will be meeting on October twenty-fourth. I'm not able to attend, so my colleague trustee Wong will be representing our district.
BCPC rep, is there anything that we need to hear about?
I don't think so, I've just been sending out all the notices we've been getting.
We have no correspondence for action, but we have correspondence for information. There was a report on the budget twenty twenty-six consultation from the Select Standing Committee, pages one to ten and fifty-eight, sixty-three are attached. That is it for respondents. I'm looking for a mover and a seconder to adjourn the meeting. Moved by trustee Larson, seconded by trustee Belisa, all in favor? Thank you, thank you, folks. Drive home safely, good night.